Everyone, welcome. It's the Bergen County Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Mayor and Council Special Meeting, May 22, 2017. It's 6:36 PM. Madam Park, would you be welcome?
Mayor Cranjak?
Yes.
Councilperson Deversa?
Yes.
E. Park? O.?
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
M. Park?
You.
Woo?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Borough Administrator?
Yes.
And Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present, mayor, except Councilwoman Park.
Thank you. Please all rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Please remain standing in observance of a moment of silence for the path of Catherine Talavian, who passed away last week. Thank you. Madam Park, please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you very much. I had the honor of creating a proclamation last week, and I'll read it. It's regarding National Police Week. Whereas President Donald J. Trump and the United States Congress have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas during Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week, we honor the men and women of law enforcement who have been killed or disabled in the course of serving our communities and safeguarding our democracy.
Mayor, Councilwoman?
Welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Police officers are the thin blue line who sacrifices protect and serve us every day, and we pledge to support them as they risk their lives to safeguard ours. Last year, 118 officers died in the line of duty, and of those, 66 were victims of malicious attacks. These attacks increased by nearly 40 percent from 2015. And whereas our liberties depend on the rule of law, and that means supporting the incredible men and women of law enforcement. And whereas the Englewood Cliffs Police Department is essential to safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Englewood Cliffs. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, oppression, and intimidation by anyone. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, Bergen County, New Jersey, calls upon all citizens of the borough to observe the week of May 14th to 20th, 2017, as Police Week, observing and commemorating those law enforcement officers past and present, whom by their faithful law-abiding and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to Englewood Cliffs. To get further resolved, that the mayor of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs publicly salutes the service of the honorable law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation. Thank you.
Mayor, for the record, Councilwoman Park arrived at 6:40 PM.
Noted. Okay. Do you have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
One more.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please come in to the microphone, state your name and address. Yes. Yes.
And so now the appropriate time to ask questions regarding the resolutions, or we'll break you out and ask questions if you want to introduce them.
So the way this works is you get to comment. We don't necessarily answer questions here. We can listen to your questions and then get back to you if we feel that's appropriate, or we could answer them on the spot if that's appropriate. I see we have gentlemen from our police department here. I read a proclamation that the chief was here, but then he walked out. It's posted, and I welcome you to read it.
Name and address, please.
Deborah Sabar, 106 Hollywood Avenue. I wanted to understand exactly what the approval for professional services for investigation of certain high-age citizen complaints, what exactly that was about, and what the cost would be for these professional services, and what exactly who would be hiring. Is that a professional attorney? Is that a professional type of professional? And the other question I have is just the approval of meals on meals bicycle ride, which I think is a great thing. I'm just wondering how that works under the police department and overtime. Is there overtime involved that the town has to incur to participate in that, that we project in our budget, or do we not have overtime involved?
Just defer to the administrator.
If any of these events are over time, or the police department deems it necessary for safety, they do backfill the organization. Last weekend we had one, and they were advised of the necessary manpower and what possibly associated with that. So if the police department deems it necessary to have police officers available, they have to reverse the power.
Great, thanks. So my first question, an answer, or do I have to wait for that?
Mayor, please.
Yes, I will defer to Borough Council to give a comment on that as she thinks appropriate.
Okay. We are going to be discussing it, but we're going to table it. I have not actually presented a resolution for that, but we're going to be discussing it in brief, answering some of your questions hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Yes.
Chief Logan Chiau, in reference to Resolution 78-97. He's going to say the mayor and council, six council people, okay, and a mayor. Go on, this council presented this idea, and when and where the meetings were conducted to discuss this matter before the town would spend the money authorizing the borough attorney to research and develop this resolution. Is there anyone?
Do you have any other comments?
Sure, I do. I know I was not contacted by this mayor and council or the police committee. For that matter, the police committee never met, as will be the protocol as per the borough bylaws. I want to know if all the council people knew of this resolution. I've not been made aware of this, but I have been made aware that four council people do not know anything about this resolution. How is this possible? How is the rule of law and this working together? Englewood Cliffs Police Department is an accredited police department from Galia, the Commission for Law Enforcement Accreditation, the New Jersey State Chiefs Association. By Resolution 2008-51, the governing body adopted the New Jersey Attorney General's Internal Affairs Guidelines for the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. The person responsible for the management of said internal affairs policy and procedures shall be the chief of police or his designated. Englewood Cliffs Police have, in accordance with the New Jersey Attorney General's Guidelines, fulfilled all of the requirements with our own internal affairs policy, organization and administration policy, early warning system policy, rules and regulations that were adopted by Resolution 2013-119, which established that we will follow the New Jersey Attorney General's IA guidelines. All of our internal affairs officers are fully trained, which is updated periodically. Every officer is aware that all internal affairs complaints will be received and be forwarded to the IA Bureau. We have complied with every aspect of the New Jersey Attorney General's Internal Affairs Guidelines. All IAs come through me, the chief of police.
Thank you, that's very useful.
I'm not going to share.
No, that statement that you just made is very useful.
That's right. In the darkness of night, the resolution was concocted, and by whom? This only starts to undermine the chief and the entire police department. I found out about this resolution by looking on the website. Very pitiful situation when the chief of police has to get information from the borough website. I then received a letter from Anne Marie Rizzuto at 5:27 PM Friday, May 19, by email. I was taken aback by the contents of this letter, which Anne Marie has sent and been in contact with the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office and was already writing the resolution. I also contacted the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office, and I'm requesting a copy of the letter that was written by Assistant Prosecutor Brian Sinclair to Anne Marie Rizzuto today. This resolution is legally questionable and cannot benefit the Borough of Englewood Cliffs or the police department.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I thought you was thanking for the proclamation, but you didn't. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to address any of that?
No, if we're going to have a discussion, I might would prefer to do it that way.
Oh, alright.
Then we'll get to it.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Okay, do you have a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, okay. The first resolution that we have up tonight is 2017-96, Approval of Meals on Wheels Bicycle Ride Through Englewood Cliffs. Does our Borough Administrator wish to add anything to what's going on there?
It's many rights that come through our community. This is one for, is known to support funding for meals, so it's a nonprofit organization. I don't need to leave you to tell you the route, but it's been on the grid.
No, that's fine.
They requested our assistance in getting the word out. We have it. It's a very worthy cause. They have complied with all necessary certificates of insurance to protect the municipality against complaints.
Right, and I think the way this all started for the council members and the public is that our Borough Administrator is implementing a new policy, and any such event going through town, using our town, or impacting our town, needs to get council approval.
Correct. And to make certain that the borough has knowledge of these events, it's usually best practice to do this, as well as to make certain that we have the proper certificates of insurance in place, where our risk manager has reviewed them for the proper coverage. So it protects us should an event occur, and there's no resolution, that means there's no certificate, then maybe you have appropriate authority throughout the community.
Okay, thank you. Is there any council member who wishes to make a motion?
Someone?
Second.
Could you do a roll call, please?
Councilperson Deversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Thank you. The next resolution has been tabled. Did you want to add anything to that?
Well, if you want me to discuss now, or do it on unfinished new business, however you want. Do you want to do the cap ordinance first?
No, you can discuss.
Okay. All of the council members have received a draft resolution. I have discussed the purpose and guidelines for the resolution with one, two, three, four council members, and left a message for Councilwoman Park. I did not discuss it with Councilwoman McMorro, or the mayor's been involved, but I haven't had discussion with him on the particular procedures or content. This was not developed in the dark of night. This is the result of an IA complaint that was made, was reviewed by the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office, and was declined for investigation by a letter dated May 5. Because of certain rules and regulations, the mayor and council is desirous of moving forward with handling of that IA. It is, it has been submitted that there are significant potential conflicts of interest between members of the police department due to a pending litigation against the borough, and with you, chief, due to your pending litigations with respect to this particular IA. Therefore, the borough has an obligation to see the IA investigation to a close. There are further steps that we need to take, and I have been in consult with the BCPO, as well as reaching out to the Borough County Prosecutor's Office for the record, as well as reaching out to the Attorney General's Office. However, Attorney General would not speak with me because they, the deputy attorney generals don't talk to towns unless they're involved in a lawsuit. So the state is not being considered for any lawsuit here. However, the BCPO has a way to contact and consult with the Attorney General's Office, and that is being accomplished. That is the reason for the tabling of this ordinance. It will be reviewed once I receive some guidance. There are several other avenues to address, including reaching out for and addressing any open IA with you, chief. I did send a letter to the BCPO. It's a confidential letter, however, I CC you. I did send it late. I thought it was on Thursday, not Friday. I don't, I don't really remember. But regardless, I did attempt to contact you, and I did attempt to speak with you today. I did not hide the resolution. I let, it was on the website when the agenda was posted, and it was distributed in confidence to the council members with the proviso that it could not be released because it is a draft, that it still was under review by the BCPO, and it will not be reviewed unless and until the council decides that they are going to vote on it. So that being said, I have reviewed pretty much all of the provisions with at least four of you individually and not in any meetings. There were no meetings with respect to this matter or to putting together a proposed resolution. That was the work of myself, as I am obligated to do in reaction to the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office correspondence. Action must be taken, whether it comes from the borough, from the police department, or from direction from the BCPO to handle this, and in what method and manner they wish us to handle it. The one thing we do know is that the Attorney General's Guidelines, Attorney General Guidelines on Internal Affairs, by the way, council members, I'm going to be distributing this to you. It is at least 48 pages long, and has about 10 exhibits to it. Anyone can download this and review and find out how and what you can do with an Attorney General with an IA under the guidelines. Of course, the borough is aware that we are required to and did adopt the Attorney General Guidelines. We're aware that we know that they, our own individual guidelines in conformance with the Attorney General are adopted by the police rules and regulations, and we know that our department does its best to try and follow the Attorney General Guidelines. Nonetheless, it would be remiss if there is an actual, potential, serious conflict of interest by the investigating agency that we need to take action to still see an IA complaint to its end. We are not purposely hiring an outside investigator to avoid a decision for or against a complaint or anything of that nature. We are merely, assuming the BCPO continues to take the position that has already been enunciated to me, we are merely looking to have a qualified investigator finish the IA, make a recommendation or resolve, and then from there, handle it if it is necessary as a disciplinary matter through the chief's office. The IA guidelines are, exist for two major reasons. One is to assure the confidence of all members of the public whenever any IA complaint is filed for any reason. Every single person who is a citizen in this state has the ability to file an IA complaint because they have an issued in officer or officers. The guidelines are meant to instill confidence so that people are not chilled from filing a complaint, that they know they have an IA officer that they can go to who will maintain confidentiality, not break confidentiality, for reasons that are contrary to the Attorney General's Office. The second purpose for the IA guidelines is to instill confidence in our police officers that they know they themselves, when accused of a charge, whether it's criminal, official misconduct, or little minor breaking of some citizen might complain that he cursed at me at the motor vehicle scene, motor vehicle accident scene. Those are all IAs. They can run from the most minute type of complaint to the most serious. The secondary purpose of the IAs, and frankly, it's equal with confidence for citizens, is confidence for police officers, that they know they are going to get a fair shake, that if they are accused wrongly, they are going to get an independent investigation. If they are accused properly, they will be disciplined if that is necessary. None of this has been pre-decided. We only, I only recommend that this council, this borough, needs to get to the end of this particular complaint. And frankly, the end, when I say the end, I mean the end of the investigation. If that's the end of the matter, so be it. If that's not the end of the matter, then action needs to be taken, and at that point, this mayor and council would be consulted again, probably in a closed session, and with notice to any individual officer. Now, the other thing that I want to point out to members of the public so that you understand, is that conflicts of interest are serious matters when it comes to dealing with citizen matters, whether that citizen is a fellow police officer who makes a complaint against another officer, or a council member who makes a complaint against an officer, or the owner of the shop down the street who makes a complaint, or whoever it may be. Confidentiality of the IA process is extremely important and is emphasized throughout the AG Guidelines. The names of IA complainants are not allowed to be released. The factual circumstances of IA complaints are not allowed to be released. Information gathered during the investigation from interviews of witnesses or even police officers who are what is called under the IA, the target, that information is not allowed to be released, except under very stringent circumstances. For example, if the borough is named as a defendant in a litigation where this IA complaint might have been complained about, the borough is entitled to receive a copy of the IA complaint. That doesn't mean the borough can then go publish it somewhere. They're entitled to receive a copy. But I emphasize this to each council member that I did speak with, and in this resolution, and in my discussions with the BCPO, that we are concerned about the continued confidentiality to be maintained. The BCPO is also concerned with that. One of the things they raised to me late this evening, late this afternoon, which led me to table, is that we need to, if we do, if we are authorized, to go ahead and hire an outside investigator on what appears to be strictly an administrative matter. It's not a criminal case, it's not official misconduct. It appears to be strictly administrative. One of the things that they are concerned about is the confidentiality to be maintained by an investigator. Of course, in our draft resolution, I provided that, which we're not considering now, but I would certainly require that confidentiality must be maintained in accordance with the IA guidelines and everything else. The thought would be to hire a police representative, whether from the state police, a local government, a former retired chief, any number of services that are out there provide this type of services. It's not a usual situation. I will admit freely, I realize that this is not fraught with issues. It is. I've done a lot of research. There is no clear authority that prohibits it. There is no clear authority that allows it. So it goes both ways. The only thing the AG Guidelines says is that criminal accusations and official misconduct accusations must be investigated through the police authority, whether that be the local police department, or the BCPO, or the AG. Those cannot go to an outside. The AG's guidelines are silent on what to do when a conflict potentially exists between members of the department and possibly even the chief when a citizen makes a complaint. That's what we have here. Once again, Englewood Cliffs is challenging me and itself for at least the third time since I started in January with an unusual legal situation. I am doing my best to dot all the i's and cross all the t's. I've looked through all the consulting that we need to look through. I've tried and attempted to reach you, and I will attempt, I'm not asking for a response. I will attempt to reach you, and this is in accordance with my discussions with the BCPO. No one's looking to block out the ECPD, but we need guidance. We really need guidance, and that's what I'm looking for. If and when this resolution comes back, you're all going to see a copy of it because it's going to be done in an open, public session. If there has, again, because I can't discuss any matter about the IA, I see no reason for a closed session, because no one's name is going to be uttered in conjunction with this. No facts are going to be discussed in conjunction with this. There is a clear indication that we need to continue, everyone knows, to maintain confidentiality when and if we address this. Now, the members of the public, having had, whoever wants to say, and I heard you, chief, your comments, what I'd like to do right now with the strictures that I talked about is entertain any questions by the council members so that I can be prepared for the next meeting if it comes back. If you choose not to ask your questions now, I would again, as I've told you two or three times over the weekend, please call me and discuss with me any concerns or any questions. Again, without revealing any investigation materials, I will answer all of your questions to the best of my ability. And I think that's enough talking for me right now, so.
What I would do is, at this point, I want to just thank our Borough Council, because this is a very serious and impactful matter on Plamas and on the police force. I think you did a great job of explaining.
Thank you, mayor.
In a very respectful and thoughtful way.
Thank you.
In particular, when it comes to confidentiality, and in particular there, in terms of confidentiality of Plamas. So if there's anyone from council who has any general questions, nothing specific about any particular IA, please raise them now. And you'll have other opportunities as well.
I just have one quick question. Shouldn't this have gone to the police committee initially? I mean, we have a protocol, right? Any police matters should be discussed at the committee?
Uh, well.
How did this come about?
Okay.
I didn't get the phone call until, what, 3:30?
Yeah, I understand, but you did receive emails from me on Friday night, asking if anyone wants to call me, please call me. And also, you received the resolution in draft last night. Certainly, I'm not hiding it, and I knew there was a good chance that, because the BCPO talked with me, and I knew they were going to get back with me today. In any event, this didn't go to the police committee, and nor did it occur to me to do that. I received the letter on May 5, and I diligently began working on May 5 to try and figure out what to do and where to go with it, and the initial discussions were with the BCPO was, you know, what type of matter is it? Is it criminal? Is it official misconduct? And they had already reviewed it, but we reviewed it all over again. I would have to look at the bylaws to really get an answer to your question, but I must say that, again, the particulars of this, because they have to be. I must say that, um, we, again, the particulars of this, because they have to be confidential, I certainly was not going to share any particulars with, with any members of the police committee or anyone else, other than the prosecutor's office.
Okay, so, um, you received the letter on the 5th of May?
Uh, well, I think it was the 6th, the day after.
5th or 6th, it doesn't matter.
Whatever, whatever.
Beginning of May.
Yeah.
You said we, um, had discussed it, so who are we? And who on the council, I mean, so...
I didn't get a copy of the letter.
Are you saying, are you saying that...
Well, because it's not, it's a confidential matter, you wouldn't have gotten that.
Right, I'm not looking for a letter, but are you saying that no one on the mayor council knew about this letter that you received?
Uh, no.
Or did you, did you discuss it with any one of the council members who were there?
No, I discussed it with the mayor. But, no, I didn't discuss it, I did not discuss, other than the fact that an IA exists, and the Burton County prosecutors reviewed it, prosecutor's office was requesting to review it months ago, reviewed it. Our office sent a follow-up letter at some point to them, saying, "This has been in your office since November. Please review." We sent a second letter, "Please review," and a couple of months after that second letter, May 5th, or, that's the date of the letter, I got it shortly after, uh, we received the response. And they, this is, it's a form, typical form type of letter, because, uh, they do not, and as, as anyone who does their homework can easily discover, the reason why the BCPO does not undertake an investigation is because they have a limited jurisdiction. They can only take over matters if they involve charges against the chief, and therefore, they, they would, to any charges against the chief, they typically take over the investigation, especially if it rises to the level of criminal or official misconduct, because it's felt that an IA officer under a chief cannot investigate his own chief. The only other time that they will take, uh, take, uh, matters that are against other police officers is again, in the element of criminal or official misconduct or both. The criminal misconduct usually, official misconduct usually follows criminal misconduct. So if someone's charged with a crime of, of course, you know all that.
So, so you didn't quite under, uh, answer my question, why didn't it go to the police committee? I asked that before.
You know what? My, my only response to you is, listen, I just heard the chief say it wasn't considered by the police committee. I also heard him say that four council members didn't know anything about that. Okay, probably, probably six council members didn't know anything other than when it was released on Friday. That, that's the best that I can say with respect to it. Um, and, and the only other thing that I can tell you is this, I didn't consider the police committee or anyone else because it's an IA matter. What I did was deal directly with the BCPO, who I can talk to about this confidential matter, because they maintain confidentiality. The person that's assigned for the chief is the same person that's assigned for me to call about the ECPD. So, that's your answer.
Is there anyone else on the council who wishes to hear it?
Yes.
Question. So, Henry, it's, um, I'm, I'm assuming since prosecutor's office is not, is not, is not entertaining this, that it's neither criminal nor the chief?
Correct.
Okay. And without getting into specifics, but...
Correct.
So, so is the problem that we don't have a protocol for that?
No.
If it's not, if, if the Burton, I, this is, I'm just throwing it out there because this is what it, I don't want the appearance of any, for any of the public to think, you know, that it's not, we're not following protocols.
Yeah, no.
So if it's not, if it's not the chief, and the prosecutor says it's not criminal, why, why can't our, our typical IA be done? I'm sure that's a question that we all would...
Yes.
And I mentioned that there's a conflict.
Yeah, there, the, the, here, the IA guidelines specifically have a, as a bedrock of IA, and I, I mean bedrock, as a bedrock of their guideline, they have a, a, what is generally called the police police their own. In the first instance, the police department wherein the complaint is filed, and you must file locally, okay? Someone from Inglewood Cliffs can't go somewhere else to file a complaint, they have to come here, okay? The fir, in the first instance, other than, under the guidelines, our department has to investigate all IA matters. This one was begun here in Inglewood Cliffs, and an initial investigation was attempted. I am unsure as to how far it went. It's one of the things I will take up with the police department at the proper time. I did not request additional records because I'm not ready to receive them. I need to know where it's going before, I don't want to receive them if I'm not going to eventually give them to the right person. So, I, I am working in the dark somewhat, but minimally, please, the theory is police should, should investigate their own, so police should police themselves. When there is a conflict of interest, there is no clear direction on where the ma, how the matter should be handled, if it is a non-criminal, non-official misconduct matter. When you have an official misconduct and crime, it's fine, close to the BCPO. When there is an administrative matter, where they are being charged, potentially charged with a rules and regulations violation, that's where the issue is. There's no guideline in the AG's office, there's no guideline in the BCPO's, there's no guideline here. So the question really is, if you, if you see a statute that permits you to do something, then you can do it. If you don't see a statute that prohibits you, but there's no statute that permits you, what do you do? We're in a quandary.
I got you. So if, um, oh, this is the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Or anybody else?
I don't want to get too specific. I didn't even read the plan, because I spoke earlier.
What about, you know, in case, if we hired this, this, in this, in this, our, our charge is repaid, our, how would, how would it cost emergency?
It would cost the borough, typically, we would have it through the IA, and typically, they would, uh, through the police department, and they would do it on their time, there's an IA officer that's designated. So this would be cost of borrow money. I did, to answer one question, I did look at other professional service contracts that we have. I specifically made a determination that $125, a recommendation for you guys, you could say yes, you could say no, but I said $125 an hour, and I said limited to $3,500 per investigation. That's up for discussion. I've discussed with the administrator, I, someone asked me, who did I talk to? I'm, I, I, sorry, but I, uh, councilwoman, no, but of course I relied upon our administrator, who has a vast, uh, uh, sense of, um, experience. So, I apologize. I did discuss with her in the beginning stages. Here we were going what we were doing, and, and really, at the end of the stage, she did, um, she did, uh, you know, I did consult with her quite a bit, and we, we're, I'm not saying there aren't issues here, there are issues, there's no easy answer. Um, I recommended $125 and $3,500 limit. There is a line item that this could fall into, we're not there yet, but if we get there, we'll get there.
And a lot of testing.
Yeah.
Who can assess also this outside investigator?
Um, well...
Who can assess if there are also...
What I suggested was that the administrator and myself work together in a confidential manner to interview the, this type of person. It's like I already said, and frankly, maybe the state police has someone they could recommend, but regardless, there are several chiefs of police and several attorney investigators that do this type of thing, which is really akin to a disciplinary investigation. So say if your DPW had a, uh, a, a matter, and you didn't want, um, and you needed to have it investigated, you could go to your police department, have them investigate, you could hire an outside investigator. It's not as fraught as with police. But, yeah, we would, I've done some research, there are people out there, there are recommendations for the type of service and the per, type of person who would do this. There are different kind of people that do it. And the professional services aspect is a local public contracts exception, you are allowed to do professional services. What I have seen is that these people hold advanced degrees in public administration, police administration, and they have years of experience running their own departments or being internal affairs investigators. But they qualify under local public, LPL, uh, as professional service. If they do not have an official degree, if they do not have a professional degree, then I couldn't necessarily do that, there are other provisions within the public bidding laws, uh, but, you know, there, this is a specialized service, so it's probably not something that you were bothered on after our Q on.
Yes, Councilwoman Park?
Um, so, the Burton Prosecutor's Office had a decision saying it wasn't a criminal matter, correct?
No. They said, "We decline to investigate."
So they made your decision what's a...
Correct, because it does not fit into their limited jurisdiction. What they said was, "It's not charges against the chief, and it's not official misconduct or crimes against any other officer. We don't do anything else." If you go on their website, you can pull down their big fat report from 2016 and learn what their jurisdiction is, but I did it already, and I'm telling you that's the basic reason why they don't take these on.
And the same applies to the BCPO as well as the AG?
The AG, I, I did not research the AG's ability to conduct IAs. They are not the first go-to for locals. Locals must go to the Burton County Prosecutor or to the prosecutor of their county. They, locals are not necessarily to go to an Attorney General's office.
So, and I, I think...
No one would get on the phone me either, so...
So, and you're saying this is more of a disciplinary type of...
In the end, if, 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 if the result of an IA, which the result is, you want to find whether or not the charges can be sustained or unsustained, unfounded, dismissed, the investigator can make a recommendation. Let's say he says, "I find that these events occurred and they constitute a discipline matter." From there, you would have to have charges developed and approved and served on the officers like any other disciplinary.
How is the same kind of situation handled in other towns? I mean, for us to spend this kind of money, it's rare.
Let me just, you're, you're missing one real major fact, which, Henry mentioned a few times, which is that there's a conflict of interest.
More than one.
More than one conflict.
Significant conflicts of interest.
With the police department here, looking at this particular, or these particular IAs.
Yes.
So that, every, usually it'll work, but the borough's being sued by the police department.
I mean, the, the PBA has filed a lawsuit, and they've made complaints in the lawsuit. Now, putting aside the validity of the claims of the PBA, and putting, and I'm not saying the mere fact that the PBA filed a lawsuit, what I'm saying is that the PBA litigation itself creates a conflict in this matter. Whether or not it presents a conflict in any other matter, I'm not opining on because no other matter is before me. There may be others, but I don't have them. And there's more than that, and so, without stating details, there are more conflicts than that.
Are there more than one IA investigation?
I can't, I can't, I don't know. I can't, I think there might be more, but I don't have them.
Okay, so the, the takeaway is, we want to follow the rule of law, and we want to serve justice where it needs to be served. I would, at this point, move on to our agenda to the ordinance?
We're still on, um, the first reading of ordinance 2017-06, which is the capital improvement ordinance. And what has led to happen now is, um, finance committee chairperson, Councilwoman McMorro, if you could just tell the public and the council that why you have this ordinance and why we need it as a, to educate everyone.
Um, well, first of all, I have to thank Catherine.
Thank you.
I have to thank Catherine, thank you very much, for your help and assistance in, in putting this, putting this together for us. Um, basically, what, um, this portion of the capital ordinance, Mayor, does is talk about all the items that we spoke about during our, um, budget meetings on capital, and then, uh, those items were given to Catherine, and then she works with the, um, with the bond council in preparing the ordinance so that it's, all the items are properly reflected within it. Um, some of the things that, obviously, almost the obvious, some of the things we're working on are, on the DPW, it's, um, it's the roads, um, road signs, bathrooms, senior center various improvements, um, also, senior center furniture, submersible camber, DPW various vehicles, asphalt putt blocks, and, um, a full concrete pad of the DPW. That was under, uh, the DPW. And then for police, we have testing for the leg and accessories in building, hiring of an architect, sign boards, alcohol machines, additional monies put towards the locker room renovation, for, again, portable sign boards, and cameras that the chief had requested. And, um, along with those numbers, and all the other costs associated, um, that happened and felt, we're needed working, you know, a moment together. Um, with the bond council, we'll put into, uh, into the bond. Uh, Catherine, is there anything that you would like to add to this that I missed?
Just the soft costs. The soft costs, I usually put a percentage on equipment, um, and a large percentage on, uh, roads, equipment, engineering costs, so that the ordinance can absorb all the costs associated with the equipment, uh, bidding, any advertisements, any, um, legal requirements can be charged back to the ordinance so that the cost of the equipment or the construction is within the totalities of the ordinance, as opposed to a scrambling in the operating budget, if you were to, uh, pay for it.
Yes, and, um, we all received the list of the roads that were approved for the Riverside Blocker, and I wanted to thank everyone for, you know, working with us and getting this spe, special meeting put together, because by doing this introduction tonight, Mayor, we can have the second reading at our regularly scheduled June meeting and, and get back on track, uh, and, and with a target date of when to start for all the roads, so...
Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, everybody, yeah.
Uh, current motion, Phil, into the public?
So moved.
Are we doing that?
No, no, no.
Right, in 20 days, we'll do that. All right. Uh, so I just, a motion to introduce it.
So...
All right. For our call?
Councilperson Zavesta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
And the meeting is set for June 14th, and the bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new communication signal systems equipment, new additional furnishings, and a new automotive vehicle, including original apparatus and equipment in, by, and for the borough of Inglewood Cliffs in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $984,560, no cents, to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. And again, the public hearing, uh, is June 14th, and the public will be able to speak at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is there any unfinished or new business that we would like to discuss?
I have unfinished business to discuss, I would like to discuss.
Sure, what is the unfinished business?
Um, I know we're talking about conflict of interest, but it just came to my attention that, um, I think that was a recent planning board meeting, and, um, we have a town employee who works for the Building Department, who's also on the planning board, who voted for the last five, I guess, whenever they met, has voting rights, so, I've never heard of a town employee having, being on a board and having voting rights, so it's required.
What is required?
The planning board makeup, the, under the MLUL, requires a borough employee to be a voting member as, I think it's a class three member, he's a voting member.
I think it's a class two member, because I looked it up, and the class two member, unfortunately, we already have, I think Mary O'Shea is a class two member on that.
Who, who is that?
She, she's on the planning board as well as environmental committee.
Mary O'Shea is not an employee of the borough.
If I may.
I think you guys...
I think you go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah, it's a good question, I understand what you're saying. The year before, Councilwoman Ms. O'Shea was, what you're saying, but then, this most recent year, she stepped from that position and went to a full four-year member. She was reappointed in 2017 as a full voting member, what's that called? The chairman just left, I wish he would have stayed five more minutes, he could have explained it better, but yes, he was, she was.
She's on the planning board as well as Mr. Lee, correct?
No, no, but she was in that position, the class, if you're saying class four.
I need to look it up.
So, the position they're talking about, she was in the year before.
We had checkers earlier.
She stepped from that position down, and then she was moved into a full, a four-year voting member, and then Jay Lee was put into the position that you're now, so he was appointed in 2017. Those were new appointments at the Reorg, remember the Reorg this year?
I remember.
They were newly appointed this year, into those new positions.
Wasn't he still reappointed last year, the year before?
Sorry, you have a question?
She, she acknowledged me.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
I'm the chair of the meeting.
So, my question is, so he was appointed in 2016?
As an alternate.
As an alternate, so there was a reappointment, is that what you're saying?
We all sat here, we did that back in January, cameras were rolling, everybody was...
I mean, it's, it is confusing what the member needing to be a borough employee, so you are correct, but Ms. O'Shea stepped from that, became a four-year, and then Mr. Lee.
Is there, I'm just curious, is there a reason why it's coming up tonight?
Yeah, because there's a conflict.
Keeping you up at night?
To me, it seems, it seems like there's a huge conflict of interest.
Huge?
Yeah.
We just explained it to you.
You're telling me that, first of all, just as a layman, you can say that from outside, there's somebody who's employed, who is employed by the borough, who's on board, who gets to vote, and you're telling me they're allowed to, so Amber, can you send me?
That was just fully explained.
Can you please send me whatever explanation you have?
Okay, so, just in general, I'll refer you to NJSA 40,55D-23, as well as Borough Code, there must be a section in the Borough Code that mimics this. This governs over local ordinances. One member of the planning board should be a borough employee. The mayor is an ex officio or is designated, a council member is a member of the planning board, and the rest are citizens. One should be, both on the environmental commission, if there is one, and the planning board. From the top of my head, that's all I can remember, they are absolutely, the borough employees absolutely allowed to vote, and the other thing that we will need to do is look at the membership, take the time to go over with Lizette the appointments, the terms that existed, didn't exist, and see what the designations for each of those planning board members are.
That's all available, did you bring that to it?
Did I bring what to it?
The list that Amber is referring to?
No.
Okay, so your, your question needs to be researched to get your answers, and, you know, I...
That's her main question, is an employee allowed, and it's required.
Yeah.
An employee of the borough is required, yeah, to be on the plan.
It had all been researched, beginning of the year, we just need to pull that research and re-explain it.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Amber, if you can send me an email, I appreciate it.
Sorry?
If Amber can send me an email, just explaining, again, in writing, just send me the code or whatever, I'll look it up, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Any other unfinished or new business?
Um, I would just like to ask, do we want the council to know that in the month of August, the Charlotte Place grant that we spoke about is going to be done in the month of August?
Right, we're also having, we're also having a special meeting on June 12th to discuss Woody Field, everyone.
Eight o'clock.
So, tell your friends, neighbors, and anyone...
I was just going to ask if, I don't know, I spoke to Catherine about it last week, if it's okay, about Woody Field, the advertising, June 12th, whatever creative ideas we can come up with, you know, to make sure everybody knows about it, is that, if you can help us with that, too. Now that this meeting is done, and it won't be confused with the next meeting.
Right, so, June 12th.
June 12th.
Special meeting, eight o'clock, Woody Field meeting. Tell everyone, I know you'll be here.
I also, Catherine, I also mentioned the service yard today, so, you know, to ask if the council has any ideas on that, get to the desk.
Anybody else on council with any unfinished or new business? Have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you.
Go in favor?